It is seven o'clock, so I would like to call to order the regular monthly meeting of the Sebastopol Board of Education. And we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dan, I think it will be easier for people to hear. We'll try with this one on, I think. This one seems to be quieter, so we'll try with that. We do have a closed session this evening as per Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five, per N's one, per N's C, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Item A, administrator's contract; item B, teacher contract. We do not have anyone this evening who wishes to speak to the board, so we will move to item five, correspondence. Any board members have correspondence to share? Linda? I think you have. All right. I don't think we have any guests, any recognition?
I think we should introduce Kathy.
Oh, okay. Well, I thought we would get to her later, but she's not a guest.
She's not a guest, but she's pretty special.
She's part of the family. Kathy, would you like to introduce yourself to everyone?
Sure. I'm Kathy Hoppy. I'm the new Sebastopol Elementary School Principal and Director of Special Education. I started on July 11th, and I have enjoyed my time so far, meeting students, parents, staff members, and some people in the community already. So I'll be updating a few things in the report.
Right, right. Good. Thank you. We look forward to that. Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Recognition? None. All right. Moving to consent agenda, item A, we have the accounts payable and financial reports which were sent to us. We have minutes of the regular school board meeting on July 7, 2016. And we have two donations. We have the Herb Cole Foundation, $3,000, which comes to us in recognition of Mr. Bear's Cole Leadership Award, and we'll let him speak to that in a minute. And item two under donations, Diane Jenquin, costumes for the prop room. So Adam, would you like to share a little bit about that Herb Cole?
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak, not on behalf of myself, but on behalf of our community and our educators. We have a wonderful school community, and this report is not a reflection of one person, but it's a reflection of all of us. So I'm very appreciative to have the opportunity to work with such a great staff and students and community. So thank you for the recognition. But I believe it's well deserved and well deserved for our staff.
Any special plans for the funds?
Yes, we used the funds to buy shirts for faculty, the Sebastopol shirts.
Okay. Okay. We need a motion then to approve items A, B, and D.
I move that we approve consent agenda items A, B, and D.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or comments? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. I don't really have anything under C this time. All right. We'll move to reports then, and we don't have a student yet. I suspect we'll have a new student in the fall.
Yes.
Okay. Great. Well, Adam, I'd like to start out with you.
Well, thank you. I'd like to start by welcoming Kathy as well. It's wonderful to have a team member and partner in Kathy. She's been with me for eight days. And I feel like it's been a lifetime though, because she's so easy to work with, she really is. And it's been really nice to reflect and bounce ideas off of her through years of experience, and I've already learned a great deal from her. And I hope to share some of those things with our school community as well. So I'm so thankful to have her on board, and it's kind of a pleasure to welcome. So that's cool. Summer's a busy time of the year, and July is no exception, especially this year. It seems like we're doing a lot to make sure that our school is ready. We have a lot of staff initiatives in place. But right now, it's kind of refreshing to see our students back in the building. Summer school started last week, so we have about 100 students in the building between all the grades, actually, K through 12. And it's really nice to have them here. We have other things going on as well. There's a basketball camp that's been going on during the day, and it's been fun to see the kids in that capacity, as well as a football camp that's been taking place in the evening. So it's just, that's why we're here as educators, to celebrate these times with kids, and it's great to see our kids here in the building. We have a student orientation and registration coming up in the next couple of weeks, August 1st and August 4th. We have a middle school orientation at 6:30 on August 1st, and our high school orientation's at 6:30 on August 4th. This is the time of the year where we start to see new faces and have new students come to our school. And I already have about 13 new students enrolled in our secondary school alone. And we still really will even see more probably new faces as part of that registration process. So I'm hoping for 2025 new kids in our school in the upcoming year. And I already expect a little bit of a jump because the incoming sixth grade class is bigger than our exiting senior class. So we will have an increased enrollment in our secondary school for next year. At least, that's what I anticipate. I also added an attachment to my report. This is something that I do each year, try to do. It just highlights some of the achievements, and the reason that I have this, this is a nice handout that I can give families, community members, talk about as successes and set our goals again with students. So Sebastopol achieved, it just highlights some of those accomplishments that we had this last year. Still updating a lot of the data points as they come in. Of course, we haven't received the newest Wisconsin forward data yet, and there's more available data on ACT coming in the future too. But it's nice to pull all those accomplishments together, and really, this is quite a list of accomplishments for a single school, and I'm just proud of Sebastopol for everything they've done. New staff, we just wanted to share with the board that we will again, I believe, planning breakfast for our new staff on August 18th, so I'm hoping that you can put that on your calendars. Typically, we have board representation there, and all of you, the majority have come in the past to help greet our new staff members. And we have our agendas prepared for that meeting, and we're excited to welcome those faces into the building. We did have an additional day of service for our new staff on August 29th. That was a recommendation that came out of our mentor program, just to give them more time with mentors so that they were better prepared for the first day of school. So we did add that to our calendar this year, and we're excited to have that extra time with them, and we're supporting that. July initiatives, you can see that we're busy, busy with a lot of things, but one of the things I focused on initially at the beginning of the month was reviewing our elective curriculum and those resources, is that we're finalizing that textbook rotation process for the elective area curriculums. And I've seen a number of staff come in already and spend days, not hours, but days, getting used to these new resources on their own time. So I'm really, really pleased. Specifically, I want to acknowledge Mrs. LeClaire, who's new to our school, and I've seen her probably six, seven days in the building. So I really know that people are excited about the new resources and the opportunity. We just had another round of interviews today with our special education teachers, and we're still working on that process, and Kathy's leaving that for us, and she'll probably maybe have a little bit more information, but that's going very well. And we also started to work with Judy Sargent a little bit on some data together, Kathy. You see, only eight days, but we're already doing a ton together, and it's really been good. And I'm looking forward to the secondary writing plan as I go in, so will my, well, my entire literacy team to talk about writing in our literacy goals for the upcoming year. In my profession, I've done a number of things, but probably nothing as rewarding as the celebration that I participated in for Matthew Bless Life. And that was probably the hardest moment as well in my professional career, because I never wanted to lose a child. And it was really nice to see the community come together around this family, and that's what Sebastopol is all about. And I'm sorry, but that's why we're here. And I thank everybody that was part of that, because that was very nice, and the family really appreciates that. That's all I have for you. Sorry.
Any questions or comments for Adam? Thank you, Adam, for this. It's nice to see it all compiled, and it's not new information, but it's nice to have it all in one place as reference, so thank you.
And so impressive is the backside, the ACT. Oh, this is the other page. I thought I saw the back on the backside.
This one, this one. Yes. Okay, very good. Yes, thank you for doing both of those. It's just nice to see it. All right. Kathy?
All right. I have two reports for you. That's what I'm going to try to do each time as the elementary principal, and then a separate report page for special education, if that works okay for you. I also had the golden opportunity of attending the Celebration of Life, and although I didn't know Matthew personally, it gave me an opportunity to see what this community does in these types of situations. And I really applaud all the coaches and Adam and everybody who put that together. And I was able to meet the family and to meet the child that's going to be in at the elementary school and is going to need that support as we move forward. I met with the 4K teachers, and we talked about 4K criteria for reimbursement by the state, the 60% rule in which students have to be in attendance in schools 60% of the time. So we looked at different options that we'd like to offer the parents, and the teachers and I talked about a letter to go out to them, and that all day, every day is an option. And then, because some parents do not want to have full time, which is perfectly fine, a Monday, Wednesday, and Friday option. So that letter is in the draft form, and we just need to finalize it with the 4K teachers, and Paula will get that out next week. That will offer an opportunity at the orientation for questions, or the registration for questions and things, but also invite a people individually, because sometimes people have individual questions that they want to answer. So just to make sure that we're in sync with what we need to do for reimbursement. And then, a welcome letter went out to all families, thanks to Paula, of course. And my mom actually came to help stuff envelopes. She loves to do that, so we got her right in. And just to talk about the new school year and what we're looking forward to, and provide those beginning of year forms. Craig has been an excellent valuable asset. So many of the pieces that I came in and, you know, asked about, where are we at with this, and where are we at with that? Craig knew teachers were involved with scheduling. I mean, they've done a lot of work, so I'm really not that far behind coming in in June like, or July like this, which is wonderful. So Joel has done some celebrations, and just everybody has stepped in, so that's really exciting. And then, we're working on the Dean of Students interviews, which you know about, and we have those four interviews set up. And I wouldn't be bored of meeting those people, because we have some high caliber people that are wanting to come for those interviews, so that's, you know, really exceptional. And then, under the Director of Special Education, a lot of things that I didn't have early in the week to put out here, working on a welcome letter also for those parents, so that we can work on those transition meetings, and that if there are parents that want to come in and talk about their children's specific needs, or have questions, or whatever, that I can, you know, work with them in that area. I already met with, we have one pending referral, so I met with that parent this morning, just to make sure that they know we're going to get that all done. And then, we're going to be reviewing the aides and who needs aides and what supports they need, and then setting, you know, letting aides know where they're going to be working for the new year. So that's what we're working on. We set up some, thanks to Callie, she started working Ashburg. She started working on some NBCI training, so I confirmed that, and that's set up for August 22nd, so that's very important. And then, some of the teachers are going to the Zones of Regulation, which is really about social emotional understanding of themselves and others. So just a few things there. And as far as the special ed interviews, we've really tried to go back in and look at our candidates, and look at those people who are certified, and making sure we're getting the most highly qualified and certified staff. So we are having some additional interviews, second interviews with people next week with some of the teachers, and Adam has been highly involved in that. So we're taking that time to do the best job we can there. Any questions on any of that?
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Kathy. Don't take your wine to get right into this. Linda?
Beautiful things this time of year, other than having Kathy come, which, I'll see her again. I mean, it's really has been great to have her, Adam, step in and just keep going like we've never lost a step here. And moving quickly to open school, working on annual meeting, and of course, that includes all of the logistics of the annual meeting, as well as working on revenues and expenditures, adjusting those, and you'll hear more about those later in the agenda. Some changes in the revenue limits, some changes in the '16-'17 budget. So we're working on that every day. Trying to pull information that will be valuable to the community on the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. It's huge. It's got a lot of information, maybe too much information, and so working on making that usable for people. Rock and I have been working together on facility kinds of things. We, for those of you that haven't, we haven't talked about this specifically, there are some pretty dramatic facility changes. The elementary conference room is becoming the early chapman special education classroom. The elementary computer lab upstairs is becoming the second elementary special education classroom. And the computer, the secondary computer lab in the 157th is becoming the English and Reading Classroom, correct? And we still don't have places for everybody. So it's doing what needs to be done in classrooms to make them efficient, effective, with people that are going to be in them, and still trying to find places for other programs and people. That's an ongoing challenge in this building right now. We all meant to talk about professional development, what comes out of what grants, what are their priorities, how much do we need to budget in each area. One big hope that we'll get the peer mentor grant, because that will give us some money to move into other areas as well. So we're still working on a big professional development budget. As Kathy and Adam mentioned, we're working on their special education interviews, and there's a lot of competition for special education teachers. And so, we talked about this earlier, I believe, but when they've decided on a candidate, we've got background checking, and we're satisfied with that, who's it is, we will offer that person a contract before the board approves them, because we can't wait until August 4th. I'll send you the recommendation and give you about this much time to let me know if there are any issues with it, but we really need to turn that around fast if we want to get quality candidates in those two highly competitive positions. And the other big thing that happened this week, and it's more Amy works, Amy Lotenkop works with it, this is another CRDC year. On this Silhouette State collection, it is extremely time consuming. It's unbelievably time consuming. Amy goes all over the key, the back and forth, trying to figure out what they're talking about, how to get the data verification, but it's a CRDC year, so that's going to take a lot of previous terms. That's about it.
Any questions or comments for Linda? Linda mentioned the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, and she has, for the last couple of administrations of this, taken the leadership for the countywide administration of this. Each school gets their own data, which they can utilize in whatever manner, shape, or form they want to. And we also get the county data, which is very valuable, not only to school districts in applying for grants, but to the county, for instance, agencies, various other groups, United Way, you name it, interested in this data, particularly for grant applications or other kinds of activities that they do. This is no small task, this countywide administration. It takes a lot of time. It takes a lot of computer expertise. And once the administration is done, and the students have completed the survey, then it's a matter of putting all of that data together in a meaningful form. And there is so much data there, and it can be put together in so many different fashions that it really is a huge task. So I know the Door County Alcohol and Other Drug Coalition is very appreciative of the work that Linda has done with this, because it is a tremendous job. Okay, moving on then to my report. I did receive some feedback from Dr. Cypher in regard to the Employee Benefits Study, which was a follow-up to our previous discussion with Dr. Cypher and Mr. Dicker. And he sent me this on Thursday, the 14th, and he said, "As of yesterday, we have studied and selected five school districts with characteristics similar to Sebastopol. With the Door Kiwanis Schools, this will make 12 districts from which we will solicit data. These districts are representative of the state. We have drafted, edited, and approved a letter to district superintendents asking them to participate in the study. Jeff will send this letter over his CISA signature. A complimentary letter will be sent to each district's board president to inform them of the Sebastopol study." And finally, he says, "We have drafted, edited, and approved a study letter, detail of the information collection, to be sent to district superintendents once we have their approval. We are scheduled after one week of work." So it sounds like they really went back and did get to work on this, which is very nice. And I'm sure he will keep us posted. He's very much of a detailed person. The, at the CISA 7 meeting last week, we talked about a project at Southern Door that I thought was quite interesting and might be something that we would look to in the future. The Southern Door Lions Club is doing a new way of vision screening. It's called digital camera device that screens eyes in 10 seconds for vision problems. Most of us remember the old eye chart. Well, this new digital device is going to be used at Southern Door. It's especially good for young children who might have difficulty with the eye chart, and it only takes 10 seconds, so it really reduces the amount of time needed. And what the plan is, would be to do this on picture day, so it would decrease the amount of time away from learning. And Jeff Dicker at CISA is looking for grant funding to be able to bring this to other school districts in CISA.
Can I add something to that?
Sure.
Because we've talked about that as the Door superintendents, when we have our ministry meetings. We're working with the Lawns, and the University, and the Hospital, that are actually, they've put together a research study, and so you've got to go through the whole human subjects thing, all of that. But basically, they're trying to get enough children of various ages so that they can calibrate for older children. And I think that because it takes a while to work through that research process, that not in this school year, although we really have to go back and check my notes, but for sure, the following school year, all of us who have signed on for that study will be using that method for our eye techs.
Great.
And it's a huge, huge, I mean, so many people signed on basically to fund it, because the research is valuable. And it happened right there.
That's great. That's great.
In the interim, if, and we're looking for donations to come into here, I would assume, I mean, it's the cause of all of the Lions Clubs, that other Lions Clubs would be interested in contributing collectively.
Yeah.
Do we know what the cost is?
I don't. Do you? No. But we could certainly find out. But I thought it was interesting, something worth pursuing. Also, I attended the WASB Leadership Conference a couple Saturdays ago, and I brought back some handouts that you have at your place. One of them was a three-part flyer, three-fold flyer, "Welcome to a meeting of the Milwaukee Public Schools," and I thought that this might be something that we could take a look at and draft. What Milwaukee does is have these available at all of their board meetings for people who are guests and wish to know the process and procedure at a public meeting. And I would be happy to draft something that would be Sebastopol instead of Milwaukee, and bring it back to this group to take a look at, and see if this would be something that you would want to do. They find it to be very effective, Milwaukee. So if you're interested, I will do that. I also brought back from Milwaukee a document, which is one of 70 that they have. This one happens to be for their hiring process. And what they have found is that if they put all of this information for a particular process on a document, and on the backside, they actually have the schematic for it, it's very handy for people. They know what the process is for hiring, for instance, and particularly when you have new people coming on board, you know, like we have Kathy coming on board now, it's very easy for them just to pull this and get that information. So I thought it was a good idea. They have done it with, like I say, 70 of their processes, so they find it very, very helpful to have that available. And for instance, on the bottom, they have a chart of who is involved in the paper screening, the interviews, and so on. And it's just a handy little tool. So again, just an idea. And I also brought back, I attended a session from the Minota Grove School District Teacher Compensation Plan, and it's another example of a compensation plan. They are still working on it. They made it very clear that this is not final, and they find every once in a while, they have to do some tweaking, some modifications, some changes. And I thought, even though we have acted on ours recently, it's always good to have another example. And they are finding that there is a lot of competition for teachers in their area, and they have put a cap on what they're willing to pay. They've lost some teachers because of it, but they're kind of caught between a rock and a hard place, wanting to hire quality staff, and at the same time, having to meet the market price. So again, other districts are dealing with the same kinds of issues that we are dealing with. I also attended a legislative update at the conference, and it talked about four things that are significantly affecting state finances, and this is particularly important, because this will be a state budget year, and we will obviously need to be involved in looking at that. The four factors that the presenter talked about affecting the state budget are significant reductions in state taxes, that's the general purpose revenue out of which the education funding comes, increased funding for Medicaid, 20% of the population in Wisconsin is on Medicaid, funding for transportation, the gas taxes are flat, and some of the general purpose revenue dollars are going for roads, and that's competing with dollars for education. And then, the major effort to reduce property taxes, that seems to be the mindset of the legislature. So these four factors will impact funding for education this next session, which is really going to be a factor. Another factor is what is being called education savings accounts. And it's also called School Choice 2.0. Education savings accounts allow education dollars to flow from the state to parents for their K-12 education. Unlike a voucher, which can only be spent on tuition, an ESAA allows families to spend money on their child's education wherever and however they choose. This could mean online courses to learn Mandarin or calculus, textbooks, private tutors, transportation costs, or classes at private schools, or a combination of all of the above. ESAs represent the complete unbundling of education, funding children instead of buildings. Yet they are not some futuristic education reform pipe dream. Five states already have these. Five states already have these, Arizona, Florida, Nevada, Mississippi, and Tennessee. So there's a lot of concern about this possibility taking place in Wisconsin, which again is going to affect funding for public schools. So things to be aware of as we start to heat up toward that state budget. Dan Ross Miller, who is the legislative person at WASB, also mentioned that he is considering introducing legislation on the redaction charges and would hope to be able to get someone to sponsor a bill to help school districts and municipalities to reduce some of these redaction costs, which a lot of people are facing at this point. So I told Dan I'd be happy to work with him on that type of legislation. And just a reminder, I think everyone got information on the WASB regional meetings. Our meeting for Region Three is October twenty-fifth in Green Bay from six to nine, so please put that on your calendars. Those are always very good meetings and very convenient to get to. The feature presentation will be the Continuous Improvement of School Boards, as well as a legislative update, which will preview legislation for 2017, eighteen. Then at a previous meeting, we had a presentation by the Boys and Girls Club, and we've done some follow-up work on that. I have contacted my contact who does grant writing, and he has indicated there may be some possibilities. What we need is more specifics on the program, and Linda and Rock are going to be meeting with the Boys and Girls Club members on Tuesday, leaders on Tuesday, I believe. Monday?
It's Monday or Tuesday.
Okay.
We rescheduled.
Okay. Yes, that's important that we get that going so we can get the specifics. I did contact someone that I know who works for the Green Bay Boys and Girls Club to see if they had any insight. They're also looking for Monday, money for the same thing. So he did not have any specifics. Cindy?
Linda, I'd ask that you contact our director at Human Services, Joe Krebsbach. I had a conversation with him about the possibility of re-looking at the use of the senior center, buses, and we're looking to do some expansion as a department for additional vehicles. So he said to just ask you to give him a jingle and give him this specific.
Very good.
Joe Krebsbach.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then there was a request to clarify the listening session objectives, which we have been scheduling now at six-thirty. The original intent was to provide another opportunity for individuals to communicate with board members, and the idea being to listen to whatever someone had to say and then advance the communication, if that is what the speaker wished, to either the board or directed to the appropriate administrator. It was not designed to immediately discuss at a board meeting whatever the concern might be. We would place it on a future agenda if that would be appropriate for the particular request that the person was making, but it would not be discussed immediately after the listening session. So just, so everyone is aware of that, and if they have individual questions, to let us know at the next listening session. But we'll follow up as is appropriate from whatever is being presented by the speaker. Okay, I think that is what I have for this evening. Any questions, anyone?
Will we, will we talk about these later? Because I, I'm just, I think this handout was a good idea. I think we talked about procedures and all that's good things. I love processes personally, but I know that would take time. So I think it'd be very helpful, because then, I just, I love these things. If anyone has any questions, it's like, well, this is what this one does, and by the way, it's what everybody follows. It removes that, geez, why do I gotta do this? Well, everybody does that. So personally, I think those are great options.
You're right, Dave. It does take time.
Yeah.
We might want to start with a few, you know, and, and work through it as time permits.
Yeah, that would be a good idea.
Okay. Anyone, anything else?
And I also agree with your thing here is, I do think the compensation in this school, we're gonna have to revisit on a regular basis. I think it is something we need to prepare for in the new era of schools.
Well, Minota Grove was very clear about that, that it's an ongoing process. It's not one and done. It's going to take time. This is a whole new ballgame from the steps and lanes that we're all used to, and everybody is struggling with it.
Yeah.
There were a lot of people from different districts in the audience, and they all said the same thing. They all had a lot more questions than answers. Okay, other committee reports. Anyone? Dave, I know you sent out that financial committee.
My only thing is, I think we're gonna talk about it next meeting.
Right, right.
We talked about a finance committee instead of a budget committee, so I can address all things.
Right.
So I just drafted something to the board, so the initial draft, we'll talk about it in our next meeting. I think just for, it'll start probably small to kind of make it value-added first, and then, but I definitely think we bring in some community members and stuff, and there's been interest already in that. But we would, it's gonna take some time to get it going, because you don't want to have a bunch of people in a meeting and then it doesn't, it wastes everybody time. That's my, my recommendation is, can we get further into this? And if we agree, you know, with the administrators, because it needs to be that collaboration. Because I know me personally, I know I'm new, I don't have the history, but it's critical that, at least for me, my one vote, I understand school priorities. And that's the big thing that I would get out of that is, what are the school by priorities? You balance it against all this legislation changes, and then we'll find a balance of what we can actually afford, you know?
Thank you for sending that out, and we do have that scheduled for the first August meeting. Any other committee reports?
The Communication Committee will get going next week.
Okay.
In the meantime, can you download a copy of that video off the new camera tonight and send me a file of it?
Tonight?
Not, not tonight, but next week.
We can get it done.
And send me a file of it so I can, we can look at the quality and what it does and how we.
I can do it on my own.
Okay, that's good. The, the meeting tonight, send it to me when you can.
I'm sorry, I was surprised. I'm leaving for Illinois, I'm boarding.
Woo, what are you doing at midnight tonight?
Thank you. I'll do it first.
Okay, that'll be great. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else, if anything? All right, moving on. Budget report, Linda?
Yes, for that, because we've got an item that's more detailed on sixteen seventeen, but just an update on fifteen sixteen. If you'll recall, we have a new auditor. We think they're going to be coming in August. And just so you have a heads up, whenever you have a new auditor, they have to go back and review previous years, so this will take longer than it will once they get through their first year and, and go forward. So we generally have the audit reporting November. I'm hopeful that it will be about that time, but there's a good possibility it will be later than that, because they have to go back and look at previous years.
Any questions, Linda? All right, and anything on action steps update, Linda?
No, I think we've got those covered through committees.
All right, moving on then to all business facilities. Is Rock here?
Rock, nope, Rock is hopefully on a kayak in the middle of a lake.
Not now.
He might be. He's really looking forward to it.
Mark.
You know how we've had this long, arduous timbering issue? And the timber trucks have moved out with the log. So I think we're pretty much done. There was some, you know, a lot of delays because of weather, because of wet ground, and then there was some confusion because trees had been marked by someone for some purpose that we had no clue. So we had to go back to DNR anyway. The timbering has been accomplished. We did ultimately have them take all of the beech trees out of the stand. And you'll notice, when it comes to turkey drop time, that the plantation over closer to Rip Road has been thinned appreciably, plus we took the ash and the beech volunteer trees out of there as well. So it's gonna be a healthier forest, and it is certainly a safer forest than it was when we started this process. We've had the electrician in, because we need to do some rewiring in classrooms that we're reconfiguring. I mentioned the classrooms that we were moving around, working with furniture, working with children who are growing, working with bubbles in, in our enrollment. So it's just the typical summer for the most part. Rock is interested in knowing when you might be thinking about a Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting. We didn't get the ten-year capital provision planned done, and we are in the middle of budgeting, and so having some input from the Buildings and Grounds Committee on which larger projects in the sixteen seventeen budget would be helpful.
In August?
In August.
Unless he feels, I'll call him, unless he feels it's needed urgently sooner. I would say into August.
It would be helpful if, when we do the annual meeting, I mean, you know, we always make adjustments to the budget when we get into October, because things happen between the annual meeting and the time that school always starts. But if there are some priorities from that committee, I like to call them in the budget so that they're part of that conversation we have at the end if people ask. I don't know if time allows for it, I really don't. It might not be possible.
Yeah, I don't either. I'll call Rock.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any questions, anyone? All right, Linda, the update on the twenty sixteen seventeen budget.
It is a slow, arduous process. I was disappointed to learn that we do not qualify for high-cost transportation revenue. And that was, and it's always retroactive, you know, you hope, you budget. The year before, we hadn't counted on it, we got it. In fifteen sixteen, you know, they say, no, you don't get it this year. And the problem is that we're just really, really efficient, cheap, when it comes to our busing. You take other school districts in the area that have similar populations but run a lot more buses, they got a lot of money from the state in, in that particular category. So anyway, those kinds of things are now coming through. That was a disappointment for fifteen sixteen, but you can bet I'm not gonna budget high-cost transportation aid as a revenue that we're counting on for sixteen seventeen. So those kinds of adjustments are going back and forth and back and forth. We're still waiting on a number of open enrollment issues, making sure who's actually coming here, even though they weren't here for open enrollment. And as you know, it's already started. The open enrollment exceptions are coming through. Every time there's an approved open enrollment exception, not only now, but once we get past the approved budget in October, it changes our budget every time that happens. So there are things that are always going to be in the air, and we try to anticipate as much as we can, but it does require changes as we go through the year. We've got additional expenses that are coming in that were not part of our original preliminary budget, but those are all being packaged and listed and will come when we have the budget at the annual meeting. The big pieces on that, of course, are our salaries. That's, that's the biggest portion of our budget. And so once we get support salaries, we have teacher salaries, we're gonna administer some costs, then we'll have a much better idea of where we are. We're pretty good on where we are with materials and supplies right now, other than a few surprises, and we've just gotta get the salary piece going for, to be ready for the annual meeting.
Linda?
Dr. Wood.
What kind of outreach efforts do we have to put forth in order to get those enrollment numbers accurate? Do we do telephone calls, paper?
Well, you know, Adam said that he was hoping to nail twenty-five new students. I was floored once a long time ago, where a principal told me, oh, I've got sixteen new kids, I've gotta have another teacher. Oh my gosh, you've got sixteen new kids? Yes, let's get another teacher out there. What they neglected to tell me is how many kids weren't coming back. So we are very cautious in our prediction, in our projection of enrollment for the revenue limit. Because if we project high, then we're gonna have to change that and decrease our budget, because the revenue limit is gonna be lower once we get to October. Just today, I went through the students that we currently have in Powers School to see where it is. As of today, head count, we are about five fewer students than we were a year ago. I think what I'm gonna do is budget flat. We may be seeing more students come in, but we won't know which students are leaving because people are relocating until we actually get a request from the school they're rolling in for their, for their school records. So there's a lag. So we're very cautious about our projections, because it makes a big difference. Every, every student is over ten thousand dollars. Ten thousand dollars means a lot to us.
When, when, because this, this is a thing that happens every year with this open enrollment thing. I, is there a point where you have your budget and the, in the, that's my, my, my expectation in the future, right, in our collaborative meeting, if that gets up and running, or maybe you already have it, is, there'll be a set of priorities that we fund against for the school, and there'll be low priorities that got funded, but they should be earmarked that if all of a sudden, I mean, so it's, so it's not such a dramatic thing. I mean, it, it's part of the process, we go through it, head counts change. We can't change that. But we could have kind of a mechanism in our planning that as that changes, it's a reporting out, now we know what it is, but then the administrative staff, I don't know if this is viable, that's what I'm kind of maybe seeing in the future, who would be, so then in the future, when all of a sudden the head count goes down, we would already kind of know it's not gonna be budgeted, because, because when we put the budget together, you kind of prioritize and say, this is critical for the safety and well-being of our kids and education. Teachers are nice to haves, you know? That just makes the revisiting of the budget a lot easier, and that's that, maybe as we, that's what I would hopefully help this, because it sounds like this ain't ever going away. Every year, there's gonna be this fluctuation.
There is.
And to just kind of roll that in, and then, it's not like we're, you know, losing an administrator, you know, you know, you lose, you know, some, something. It may hurt, but they'll know what it is.
So we're working on it.
Sometimes it's hard to know until the first day of school.
That's my plan for changing.
Yeah, people come and people go. They don't always tell us ahead of time, so. Okay, any other questions on the sixteen seventeen budget?
When does this, I'm, one more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
When does the sixteen seventeen budget come in, so all these salaries are, when do they actually hit the staff's paychecks? Is that because we took it out last year?
School year employees' new salary start in September, so their first check under the new salary is September fifteenth, whatever that Friday is in September, is September fifteenth. The paychecks that they receive in June, July, and August are still paying on the previous school.
Yeah, yeah. And when do the benefits changes? Because we were talking that there's a concern that the benefits, do the benefits change at the same time?
No. The WRS rate changes in January. Our health insurance changes in July. It's all over the place.
No, no, because we're talking about the different milestones of things.
It's all over.
Thanks.
So teachers, their first paycheck under a new salary is, is their first check in September. Twelve-month employees, it's their first check in July.
Oh, oh, I mean, so support staff would be in July.
Yeah, they started their, well, they started their new year in July.
Okay, we have a fundraiser request, Item C, for the Trees for Tomorrow, Linda?
Yes, another fundraiser request. Trees for Tomorrow was approved by the board a couple meetings ago. That's a fall trip for the fifth grade, and they would like to sell some of these pizzas to support that trip. And each year, they've been able to do that with, been able to do the trip without pasta peanuts and kids, and so fundraisers are important. So we recommend that you approve fundraiser as requested.
It's a lot of pizzas.
It's a lot. And it's good.
Yeah.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the fifth grade Trees for Tomorrow fundraiser.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Buy some pizzas?
Yeah.
Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that is approved. Item D, we have a follow-up to the teacher salary compensation. Linda?
I'd like to abstain from.
I'd like to abstain from this since it's a relative.
Okay.
The last meeting that we had, the board approved all of the teacher salaries, and that included their base pay, their discretionary pay, and their stipend. I'm sure there are gonna be more of these, where people didn't look at it, and now they're gonna look at it. And so I did hear from one person who had looked at it, we went back through the calculations, and yes, we needed to make a change in it. So the recommendation is that David Wheat's contract be amended to reflect the fifty-eight thousand three hundred seventy-two dollars in base wage, three thousand four hundred forty-three dollars in discretionary, and one thousand five hundred dollars in stipend, for a total of sixty-three thousand three hundred fifteen dollars.
Okay, could we have a motion to approve?
I'd make the motion to approve the amended contract amount for David Wheat.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Just for process, did the numbers actually go into contracts, so is it actually a contract change or just a salary change? Because the contracts didn't...
No, we haven't redone the contracts yet. So when a new contract is done, those three numbers are... Yeah, we didn't jump right in and...
I didn't think so, that's why I was just...
Because I think America is...
It's magic, sorry.
Yeah, hear that. Oh, I was supposed to check that, okay. People get busy in the summer.
Okay, other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Abstentions?
Aye.
Okay. And item E, twenty sixteen-seventeen salaries, support staff salaries. Okay.
At the last meeting, the board directed us to go back to department heads to determine how to distribute a ten percent base salary increase to support staff. So we met everyone that supervises support staff. And in your agenda, you have basically the summary of the discussion, the recommendations of that. The bottom line on it is that, given what we have for evaluation, given the history of increases or lack of increases for support staff, that the, each wage be increased by ten percent. All of these folks are on hourly wage, and so it would be an increase of each hourly dollar amount by ten percent.
Based on distribution by the department head, I believe we compared well?
That's their recommendation, is that the ten percent is added to...
Across the board.
These are, this is the hourly wage, for example, for secretary one-two-three, the stewardess one-two-three. So over here, this reflects the ten percent increase in that hourly, and their recommendation is that ten percent is simply added to each one of the hourly wages.
And this bears clarification, because I know there's been some confusion out there. It needs to be said that over the last five years, we have only given the bare minimum of increases. In some years, it's been zero, it's been one point five percent, this year CPI is point one-two percent, which is basically five dollars a month. And the highest that we've given out, I think, is one point six-two percent. So both the teachers, which is where they're at right now, and the support staff have been tearing the brunt of this minimal increase. And this ten percent seems like a lot, but when you take a look at the sixty-seven dollars that they got per month on the highest year in the last five years, I think that it needs to be clarified that this is to catch up for what we were unable to do over that five-year period. Can I say that correctly?
Yes.
But actually, it's worse than that. Because if you look at this thing, the average annual increase for a secretary three, the average annual increase from twenty-ten to twenty-sixteen was three hundred and twenty-eight dollars a year. That's, that's less than sixty dollars.
Yeah. That got lost in the conversation last time, but it really needed to be clarified. Shame on us for not giving out that detail, but these folks have, and in addition to that, there was no compounding through those five years. So the end result is really just basically bringing up to par this staff, the entire staff at this, at this school.
I think that's why we're paying for a startup.
Sure.
Because a lot of the community, a lot of the country got stagnant, and that's why we wanted to find out what it needs, because maybe we'll find out as...
Maybe we find out it's not enough.
Right, right.
Okay, so could we have a motion, please?
I'd move to approve the ten percent increase to each support staff category wage, hourly wage, and administrative secretary.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
One comment I would make is, I think in the future, because this is hard, right, that was the feedback is, and honestly, I've experienced that in Baton, went through seven years trying to figure that out, it's hard. But based on the future, for what it's worth, I might recommend that the administration and all the supervisors start thinking now about a rubric that isn't bulletproof but is close to it so that you can really counsel your staff members and then divvy up that thing. Because, you know, there might be some better performers or non-better performers, and sometimes they're all the same and that works. I did run across one supervisor of mine that was able to do that, and it really made sense. All right, sounds good. So it ain't easy, I'm just saying that might be something to take on. Because I think the future, well, you would put a performance-based, you know, it wouldn't ever be all performance-based, but it ain't gonna happen overnight.
Right.
So if we start thinking about in this, you know, with all this, this compensation and pay is all of the year, kind of, so... Just something to think about.
Right, and it's important for employees to know ahead of time if in fact it's going to be...
Yeah, well, that's why I like processes, right, to feel later that if there was such a rubric, they would know, here's what you're gonna do. And some of that already exists because of education standards, you know, you get that, but there's that other stuff, intangibles or something.
Okay, other comments, anyone? If not, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that is approved. Moving on then to new business. Item A, annual event here, the milk bid, and we always have difficulty getting milk bids for summer season.
The price went down.
Price went down.
It's bad news for dairy farms.
Yeah, dairy farmers aren't getting as much either.
Thank goodness for Brothers Dairy, or we'd be in real trouble, because the others declined to bid, so...
Because we always give it to brothers, because they're the cheapest.
Well, I guess we need a motion to approve the contract with Brothers Dairy for twenty sixteen-seventeen.
I will some of it.
Do we have a second? Jane, okay, I'm sorry. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that is approved. Moving on then to the alternative open enrollment application.
It's that time of year, and it will be every month from now on. We have six open enrollment applications. Three of them are to come to Sebastopol from other districts. Three of them are applications to leave Sebastopol to go to other districts. And I think we can, we can do these in two groups this time, because there aren't a lot of differences. So the first recommendation is that you approve the applications of students one, two, and three who are applying to enroll to Sebastopol.
Okay, we need a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
And there's no issues on the hour limits, because we got some discussion on this. There's no issue with limits in classes on this?
No, none in this grade.
Don't have any special, special means?
You can no longer deny on that basis.
It's a hardship for us.
Unless it's a capacity, and so if it were a capacity issue, I would even bring it to...
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that is approved. And we have the three out.
Yes, there are three students who are applying to open enroll out of Sebastopol to the school districts that are listed there. None of those three students have ever been enrolled in Sebastopol before. So the recommendation is that you approve students one, two, and three to open enroll out of Sebastopol to Sturgeon Bay and Southern Door respectively.
Need a motion?
I will some of it.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Exit interview.
I apologize, this isn't really an action item, because we already did that before, but it was just to give you an update on where we are and to share more of the materials with you. Every employee that is retiring or resigning, their contact information was sent to a person who basically is subcontracting through Worsa. We sent the copy of the letter that you see in your packet to let them know that, yes, this is coming. And I believe people have already been contacted. The cost is thirty dollars per completed interview, and the anonymous results come to the district administrator. So they will probably continue to work at this until they get to the first of September, and so we will have the results after that that I can bring to the board. Because there are so few people, it may be that there would be a problem with things being recognizable because of the number, so it may be that it would not be a public document.
Okay, any questions? We don't need any action on that.
I have a question. Dr. Wood, have you ever talked to anybody who's gone through these exit interviews?
Real briefly, at PAC meeting last year, PAC is the CISA Seven Superintendent's. At a PAC meeting last year, there was a brief discussion about it, and there were a couple of people that had used it and were really satisfied, because again, they were small districts, didn't have anybody really designated to do that, didn't have the time, didn't have the know-how, and so this worked out very well for them to be able to pull some generalities out of completely anything.
Will that entire report come back to the school? Is that what, right?
Their report will, will come back here. But again, it's because there are so few people, if, if because of the number of people there's individually recognizable information, it then would not be a public document.
Who will have access to that?
It comes to me, and then I'll look at it and consult with the board.
Will the other administrators see it?
Pardon me?
Will the other administrators see that?
I haven't thought through that part yet. I think that, that the information that comes out of that might be real valuable to us, and so having that is a basis for discussion on how we can to make improvements.
Because I think the key about exit strategies is that leadership gets to see that, and I think is sitting at this table. The fact that it may not be releaseable, I think that we can justify that. But I mean, that's, I mean, that's what you want as a strategy, so I would not like that to be filtered to this group at this table.
It wouldn't be filtered to this group. The question is, it would not become a public document.
Got it, I'm okay with that.
Because it would be individualized, individually recognizable.
Anything else? Okay, item D, to, we need action item to set the annual meeting date. At last year's meeting, which was August twenty-fifth, twenty-fifteen, the date was set at August twenty-third, twenty-sixteen. That was approved, and the board given authority to change the date if necessary. And in the past, the meeting started at six-thirty with a tour of the building scheduled for six o'clock. I believe that August twenty-third is a date that works well for the administration because teachers are not here yet, so it would be more difficult on the thirtieth, as I understand.
I'll turn to Brad Cameron.
Does teachers come in on the twenty-fourth?
The teachers are here on the thirtieth.
Right. Are they here on the twenty, do they start on the twenty-fourth?
They start on the twenty-fourth. All of the teachers are here on the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, thirtieth, and thirty-first. We have new teachers only on the eighteenth and twenty-ninth, which is a Monday.
So what is the pleasure of the board regarding the date?
I'll move to set the date as we previously mentioned on the twenty-third.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Is it evening meeting usually, how long is something like that?
Six o'clock for the tour, six-thirty, and actually, the board plays a minimal role in this.
They elect their own chairman.
Right, right. Okay, any other questions or discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Okay, item E, the action on the recall election, I believe Lisa, you wanted this on the agenda?
The petitioner was successful in obtaining signatures necessary to call a recall election. Nina, I'm going to give you these two folders tonight. You have the original petitions upstairs. My working petitions are in here, along with everything from the office holder challenges, the rebuttals, the replies, and the certificates of insufficiency that were issued. State statute requires that the board call the recall, schedule the recall election on the sixth Tuesday from the date of the certificate of insufficiency, which would be August twenty-third. Same day as... Yeah. I have notified, as I wrote you all...
Pardon?
So it'll make for an interesting day, the annual meeting and that election same day?
I, as I wrote you all, I have contacted the county clerk and the municipal clerks and been in touch with them. Candidates have until Tuesday to turn their candidacy paperwork in. The office holders are automatically on the ballot. The public candidates need to turn that into the district officer may by Tuesday, and state statute requires that as being the fourth Tuesday before the election date. And I will work with the clerks and the county clerk. We will be responsible this time, you know, when we tag onto the municipal elections, our ballots go with them, the published notices go with them. We will have to have our own ballots published, the county clerk will do that, and the newspaper notices will have to be put in by us advising of the election. So I would, I think when we do election time, I know when we do election time, we designate Jean Kukel as a deputy clerk to assist with those publications and things, so I would want a motion on that as well, because those are timeframes that we're gonna have to meet. And I'll get those, I don't have them yet, but I'll get them.
I know Jean has some questions about what her role would be, so that would be helpful if we could clarify that. I know the figures that I have is that this will be costing the district in excess of ten thousand dollars, just so everyone is aware of that.
I did ask each, I have asked each municipal clerk and the county clerk to send me an estimate of their costs. The only estimate I have right now is from the Town and Jackson Board, for about seven hundred dollars.
This has come...
Just the ungeneal contact with the county as well, a couple municipalities.
So, so the statute requires, though, that the school board call the recall election.
I did check with attorney Wachowitz, and he indicated with respect to calling the election, the clerk is to submit the petition and certificate to the board, and then Wisconsin statutes nine point one zero, friends four, friends D, states that the board shall call a recall election after receiving a certificate of sufficiency. Given the use of the word "shall," it imposes a duty or mandatory action by the board to call the election to be consistent with the statute and not violate it. He says he also spoke with attorney Nate Junick at the GAB, or now the Wisconsin Elections Commission, and he indicated that if for some reason a board votes against having the election, then they would likely be made aware of this through some shape or fashion, and then first issue a strongly worded letter stating that the board needs to call the election. If that does not have any effect... If that does not have any effect, then they would issue an order to the board directing it to call the election. Nate also indicated that they take the view that you may vote on this issue, because the statute is clear that it is a duty, because I did have people question, why would we want to vote on this?
And I have an email regarding that, if you want me to send it to you.
It's a matter of.
Kind of recaps all of that.
Really a matter of formality, so we don't really have a choice. Okay, so do you want to make a motion, Lisa?
I'll make, I'll make the two motions. One, that the school board call the recall election of, for President Susan Today and Vice President Bill Beam on August 23rd, 2016. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that is approved. Did you have another motion?
The other motion I'm going to make, because I don't know if we, well, we did it in the spring, if it covers this, but to appoint Jean Kukel as the deputy clerk to assist with the recall election matters. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
We typically check with her to see if she would do, I don't know the protocol at the time.
It is the same thing that we do when we get ready for referendum, she handles all the elections.
Just because of your comment, I thought she should be called. Okay, thanks.
Any other comments?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
That the motion is specifically to name Jean Kukel as deputy clerk to assist with recall election matters.
Well, I don't know. I think that's what we've done in the past. I don't care if it's Jean or if it's Nina, or.
Well, no, Jean's the one that's the best decision. She knows what she's doing. My clarification was to assist with recall election matters, that that's part of it.
Right.
Okay.
Cindy is the assistant clerk, but Jean's in the office, and those notices and things have to go out, so it's just easier to have, to.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that is approved.
And Lisa, you'll get over to Jean next week?
Yeah, I will.
We're going to hit a timeline on the publication.
I have that going.
Yeah, it'll be important for Jean to know what the expectations are.
Yes, and I think we're duplicating actions right now, so the sooner you guys can get together, the better.
Right. Okay, that concludes this portion of the open session, so we now need a motion to adjourn to executive session. Sumo.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We'll do a roll call, will Dave?
Aye.
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 Okay, we will move upstairs to executive session.